Good evening and welcome to the June 28th meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First bit of business, we have the amendments from the April 26th meeting, and I would move for their approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. All right. Old business. Siegel, the public hearing was closed on May 24th, 2023. Resolution for the requested variance to change the minimum setback from 20 to 25, 20 feet to 2.5 feet. On the construction to replace a two-story accessory garage has been requested. That public meeting was closed, and we now have a resolution granting the request. And are you?
I have one question.
Yes.
The two feet and the two and a half feet.
Yes.
Is that you and me? There's no decrease beyond that, what is there today, right? This is, this is not a new setback.
That's correct.
It's what is actually there today.
That is correct. Okay.
The, um, the foundation, I believe, is what is on the survey. The overhang counts. The overhang didn't used to count, so the foundation is the same, but the overhang may
Oh, okay.
be a little different.
Okay. Foundation is the same, but, yeah. Good. Thank you both.
Okay. We just have the resolution. Benjamin Siegel and Jennifer Siegel, 20 Parker Avenue, Hyde Park, New York, June 28th, 2003. Resolution 23-07Z. Whereas the applicant Benjamin Siegel and Jennifer Siegel have submitted an application for area variance to change the rear and side setbacks to replace an existing detached garage at property located 20 Parker Avenue, Hyde Park. Identified as tax parcel 606520855041 in the neighborhood zoning district and historic overlay district. Whereas the project is depicted in a plan entitled Garage Siegel Residence, prepared by D. Freeman. And whereas the applicant seeks area variances from the zoning law, section 108, 515, bulk regulations to change the minimum rear yard setbacks from 30 feet to two feet and to change the minimum side yard setback from 20 to 2.5 feet for the construction of a replacement two-story accessory garage associated with a single-family dwelling. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, section 108, 33-6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The existing detached garage is now functional and not safe as it is falling apart. The design for the applicant's replacement garage will enhance the aesthetic appeal of the property. Further, the plans will continue to honor the design of the applicant's home with heritage blue shingles, traditional lighting, and a barn door feature. The proposed project will enhance both the appearance and value of the property. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances. Variances are necessary because the current garage is not functional, dilapidated, and falling apart. Ultimately, if it is not replaced, it will fall down. A replacement garage will provide safe storage for the family needs and car storage. Additionally, a new structure will be a visual improvement to the neighborhood. The requested variances may be considered numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted rear yard setback from 30 to two feet, whereas a decrease of 93 percent, and change the minimum side setback from 20 to 2.5, which is a decrease of 88 percent, for the construction of a replacement two-story accessory garage. Any detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the applicant. The requested, number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district, decreasing the rear yard setback requirement to allow a variance of 28 feet and decreasing the side yard setback 17 and a half feet, so the detached garage can be built, will not have a negative impact on the existing neighborhood. Replacement of the garage will be a visual and functional improvement. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved, the Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108, 33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Number two, payments, all fees, and escrow. Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
If someone seconded the motion first, please.
Oh, we need a second on the motion. Make your pardon.
Second.
Great, thank you. Yes, Mr. Agnewall?
Yes.
Mr. Donley is absent so far. Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. Okay, so, that is...
They're on vacation.
They're on vacation. Okay. All right. Now we move to a continuing public hearing, Mendoza, 2303Z, 4 Windmill Road. Would you come up, please? This request, and I would have a motion, I would ask for a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
Open.
That's what I'm going to do. You see what we put up with? I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Aye.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Agnewall, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed? Good. We have the motion, and we have a public hearing opened. This request is for a variance to allow animal husbandry as close as 60 feet from a residence where 350 feet is required, and to allow 228 pounds of animals to be kept where 200 pounds is permitted based on size of the lot, and to allow unenclosed storage of manure as close as 60 feet from a residence and 78 feet to watercourses and wetlands where 300 feet is required. We have requested the applicant to contact the Agricultural Environmental Management Organization to evaluate their site, and we would ask for the results of that visit and any actions you plan to take. Can I ask, have you contacted them?
Yes.
Have they responded? Oh, this is what they've responded?
Here's a copy.
Okay. Do you want to go through?
Should I read it out?
So, what I, this is a report from the AAM Tier Two Summary Report dated 6/8/23. Items of concern, nutrients, sediments, and pathogens. There are currently no concerns for this land. There is no runoff from the poultry housing in the pond. Adding more shrubs along the poultry run to absorb nutrients and pathogens will keep water quality healthy. Community concerns, there are concerns for the pond and the poultry are seldom let out, and there's no runoff areas or kill zones coming from the poultry pen. The concern should be for the wild geese on the pond, not the domestic poultry, okay? Waterborne pathogens, slight concern, the pond adding shrubs along the poultry run and pond will absorb excessive, excess nutrients and pathogens and help keep the pond and the water runoff clean. There are no current signs of runoff from the poultry houses. Slight concern, the poultry run is bare, but there are no signs of runoff or kill zones from the housing, so it well-maintained, and there are no signs of odor. As time goes on, adding wood chips might become necessary, adding shrubs along the sides for nutrient runs, okay? Seeing that, are you prepared to take any action based on this report?
Yes.
Can you tell us about it?
Well, based on the report, it's just adding more shrubs.
Use the microphone, please. The one in front of you.
Oh, sorry. Just adding more shrubs along, and then adding wood chips after we clean. But we rarely clean because we rarely get manure inside the pen, because they're mostly outside. And the times that we do clean, we let it dry, and then we do add wood chips. We just don't add it, you know, along the pen.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. We've also requested Hyde Park CAC assess the impact on the watercourses and wetlands, and we have not received that yet. We're looking, we're still looking to have their input on that. There's a question in terms of ponds, which are 75 feet from your property, and the wells that serve the area there. I think there are six or eight wells that do that. Have you seen any reports from the water quality of those wells? Do we have any of those at this point?
No, we haven't gotten any. The only, that we've gotten is to our home. The water that we receive there is an increase.
You, you get water from those wells, correct?
I, the whole development.
The whole there. Yeah. So the question is, is the quality of those wells being impacted by?
No. No.
Do we know that for certain? I mean, do we have the results of any tested?
We haven't gotten it tested, no. But what the concerns that we've had were extra chemical, or chemicals in high doses in our water. But I don't think that has to do with it.
Okay. Do you have the results of those, or any of those you could share?
That I believe so, no.
So, I believe Dutchess County Water and Wastewater has that system now, and the last notice that I got from them was that they are now posting those water quality results online, on their website. So we may be able to pull those down.
Okay. All right. So we want to get those and take a look at those, because I think that's one of the issues that we're concerned about.
That's you.
Mr. Chairman, we did a site visit.
Yes, that was, yeah.
And, Mr. Donley, you have some things to read.
Yeah, Mr. Donley, you made your site visit, and I believe you have some comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so after we met, I took a drive through the neighborhood, and I just, I went to four neighbors, and I was able to speak with three. And the three that I spoke to, they wished to remain anonymous, but they all expressed some concerns. Some of them was the noise of the rooster. I remember a gentleman saying that in the summertime, he has a pool, and he, with the children in the back, that they often can hear the roosters. Another neighbor said that his wife has our studio in the back of the house, and when she's doing her work, she can sometimes hear the roosters. He was also concerned about the waste being so close to the house, and another neighbor was concerned that the waste was in close proximity to the house, as well as near the pond. When I was there at the, at your property, it was evident to me that you care about your, your animals. But at the same time, I feel like my responsibility is to, you know, kind of find the balance with, you know, the character of the neighborhood, with also with you, with your, you know, your chickens and your, and your animal husbandry. You said you go, I have one other question. You said you're going, you're a rising senior?
Yes, I am.
And you're the primary caretaker of the animals?
Well, it's me and him, and I'm usually the one in the morning that takes care of it. I give them water, food, when I come back from home.
So you're, so you do most, you?
Yes, I mostly take care of it.
What do you plan on doing when you, when you graduate?
Well, we're planning to move, so, once they move, they're going to be, have more free time, so they're going to take care of it.
Who's planning to move?
Us.
You are?
Yes. No, we are.
You're moving? You're all moving?
Yes.
Okay.
Lock, stock, and barrel?
Huh?
Chicken, turkeys, and ducks?
What do you?
Everybody's moving?
Yes, everyone, everything.
Oh.
So what do you plan on doing with all your animals?
We're going to take them with us.
You're going to take them with you?
Yeah.
Now, this would run with the land, correct?
Yes. Well, the other thing I will say is, I didn't notice a couple of things, that there was a lot of geese droppings.
The geese are really...
My, my understanding is that birds attract other birds, so even though you have regular, like, domesticated animals, those domesticated animals can attract wild animals.
Yeah, but even before we had our chickens, the geese would regularly be over.
Okay. And I also remember you saying that you take the waste and you kind of put it around the trees?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So I'm not sure if that's the best, it's best, in terms of the waste, I'm not sure if that's the best way to deal with animal waste. Yeah. Yeah. Obviously, it would have to be some kind of container for, for the waste.
Because we really don't, we really don't get any, any, inside, what we do get is very little, and, you know, there's no, it's not like we get large quantities of waste.
Right, but still, I mean, certainly considering the distance you're, you're at right now from your neighbors, to not have a covered waste disposal, is, you're asking for that variance, and that's a very significant variance in terms of, because you're so close, it's something. Mr. Perkins, you had a?
Yeah. First, let me say that my kids really enjoyed seeing all those animals every morning, and I slowed the bus down. I hope that didn't bother you guys too much.
No.
And, you know, I believe that as a board, we've been very considerate and understanding for animal husbandry. I mean, each of the ones that we have looked at so far. But your project has, has more issues than any of the other applications we've had. So I think we're going to have to look a little deeper and talk about it a little bit more. The roosters, we have not allowed any roosters, right? The variety, not that variety. The quantity, not that quantity. And, you know, Paul mentioned the geese, and, you know, I know they're, they're wild birds, but they were making the biggest mess that was there in your yard, right? They were...
What, the geese?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like the baseball fields and the sidewalks, you know, they, and although one neighbor was supportive, as Paul had mentioned, some of the others weren't quite as supportive. And all of our previous approvals for variances have included an enclosed or removal of the waste. Now, some people put it in a container for two or three weeks and then use it, but they don't distribute it raw from the pen.
From the pen, yeah.
Okay. That's about all I had from the site visit and...
I think in hearing this, in hearing what the board members have said, the roosters, the number of roosters or having roosters is an issue.
Yeah.
And we would like you to consider perhaps eliminating the roosters. I think, second, clearly we need to have some way to contain the waste in some covered way. I think my, now, I did not go on a site visit, but I've driven by three times, and if I was the neighbor behind you, I would certainly appreciate some type of, of wall that keeps, keeps, keeps the pen out of the sight of the, of the back neighbors. But that's not in your, I'm just, that's just my comment. That's not really germane to the, to the variances you're asking. So what I would like to do is, I'd like to, I'd like you to look at those options in terms of your willingness to do those things, and we would like to get the water quality numbers that we can get and results from the CAC. And as a consequence, I would move that this public hearing be continued to next month, July 26th, so that we can get answers to that and give you, you know, the fairest chance and for us to fully understand what you're, what you're trying to do here. So I would move that this public hearing be continued July 26th?
Excuse me, Chair?
I'm sorry?
We didn't ask for public comment, I don't think.
Well, we haven't yet. Thank you. I didn't have that on my, are there any, is there anybody here that would like to make public comments? Don't be shy. Anybody, did we receive any comments?
No.
Could you just say back to the board that you, what you understand that we're saying to you in terms of what we'd like to be included and changed for the next meeting?
Okay.
Please?
I think the manure, the manure and the, and the, the roosters can definitely be a change.
Okay. So you understand?
So I do understand, yes.
Okay. Good.
Plants that are recommended by the project?
CAC?
No, the...
The bushes? Oh, these guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
Plantings.
And consider the, the plantings that they recommend in their report.
Thanks.
All right. Now, I would move that this public hearing be continued to July 26th, 2023?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. We're looking forward to seeing you next, next, next month. Thank you for, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a rehearing of a previously approved variance application, Chavez, 2301A, Market Street, on Market Street in Hyde Park. A motion to rehear this application as amended was carried unanimously as the, at the May 24th, 2023 ZBA meeting pursuant to town law 267A12. The initial application has been amended to reflect the removal of the rooster and change in the method of waste storage from unenclosed to enclosed. Mr. Agnewall, I think you have the resolution?
I have to open the public hearing, please.
I'm sorry?
Open the public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Yes, this is the new public hearing.
God.
For the amended, for the rehearing.
Okay. I would move for opening the public hearing. You want to come up?
I second.
Your favorite?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Hi, guys. How are you?
Good.
Okay. All right. So, just to ritterate, you have covered, you have enclosed storage, and I'm sorry that the rooster is gone. And now, how many roo, how many chickens do you have?
Now, I have four.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Because I think we, I think in this, we wanted to have some number on that.
Would you have more, you think, five or six?
We didn't advertise for six. We didn't look at six.
We, we did four?
There were four hens plus a rooster. If the rooster's gone, are you allowing a fifth, or are you sticking with four? No six?
I'd say we would allow the fifth hen.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
It's up to the board.
So, give them the leeway. I make a motion that we change the rooster to a hen.
Well, that would be difficult.
Allow for the fall.
But how about changing the number from, from four chickens to five chickens?
Hens.
Okay. All right. We'll put that in. Well, that will be one of the requirements. Okay. Any comments that you all have?
No, thank you.
Any new business on this? Okay. Okay. How was the cake? Was it good?
Excellent.
It was good? Okay. All right.
Very good. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? No? Okay. I would, I would move that we close this public hearing. Is there a motion? I move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Mr. Agnewall, would you do us the pleasure?
Do we have to update this with the numbers?
We will update that with the number of chickens.
Yes, so when we, when we do get to it, we can add that in as an additional condition?
Right.
That there shall be no more than five hens on site.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Resolution modifying Resolution 2301Z to grant area variances. Chavez, Animal Husbandry, 32 East Market Street, Hyde Park, dated today, Resolution 23-01ZB. Whereas the applicant, Edis, Edis Chavez, has submitted an application for area variances to allow animal husbandry to be conducted closer to neighborhood residences than allowed at 32 East Market Street, Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel 606504914274 in the neighborhood zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on a drawing prepared by Mr. Chavez, submitted on or about February 24th of this year, on a map showing measurements determined by using Dutch County Parcel Access. Whereas the applicant seeks the first area variance, first variance from zoning law, section 108-4.3B5B, to change the distance of the chicken pen to six residences from the required minimum of 250 feet to 171 feet from 13 Church, from 13 Church Street, 183 feet from 30 East Market Street, 185 feet from 35 East Market Street, 205 feet from 28 East Market Street, 216 feet from 33 East Market Street, and 242 feet from 31 East Market Street. Whereas the applicant seeks a second area variance from zoning law, section 108-4.3B5E, to change the distance of enclosed manure from the required minimum of 200 feet to 171 feet from 13 Church Street, 183 feet from 30 East Market Street, and 185 feet from 35 East Market Street. Where, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning Board of Appeal makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variances. One, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The applicant applied for animal husbandry of chickens. The chickens are out of sight and are contained when, within a pen located in the woods behind the applicant's house, and the animals are relatively quiet. The noise generated by the chickens is further mitig, further mitigated by forest cover and insulating topography. In addition, in addition, chicken eat, chickens eat bugs and ticks, which will benefit the neighborhood. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than these area variances. Usable area on the site is limited. The applicant, applicant has located the chicken pen in the most sensible location. The Chavez family sees benefit in teaching their children animal husbandry of chickens as part of the home environment. The Chavez family shares their eggs with the joint neighbors. Three, zoning Board of Appeals is required to grant the minimum variance necessary. The requested variances are not substantial, are not numerically substantial. Animal husbandry with chickens may be conducted 250 feet from nearby residences, of which there are only six. The requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The coop is cleaned weekly by the applicant. When the coop is cleaned, the manure is stored in an enclosed container on the applicant's property. Five, the difficulties are self-created. Without approvals, the applicant purchased chickens and has participated in animal husbandry for several years. Applicant sought these area variances after receiving a notice of violation ordered to remedy from the zoning administrator. Be it further resolved that zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variances... Be it further resolved that zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions. One, the granted variances are specific to replace or to the current number of chickens only. Any change or addition of animals will result in revocation of the variances. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
We would add, current number is five. We should insert five in there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend that the first condition be meant to say that. Right now, it says they are specific to the current number of chickens only.
Yes.
We can say that the granted variances are permitted for a maximum allowance of five chickens at any given time.
Maximum of, of, of chicken hens?
Yes, five chickens or hens.
Okay, chicken hens, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Okay. And payment of the escrow. Okay. With, with those variances, Madam Secretary, would you?
We need a second on the resolution.
I would second this.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Pull the board.
Mr. Agewell?
No.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Pass, the resolution pass?
Just, just a reminder to the board that this needs to, because it is a rehearing, the vote needs to be unanimous to pass.
Mr. Agewell, could you express your concerns because we're not clear in terms of the?
I don't really agree with being inside of the 250 feet from the four or five residences. I think we're setting a precedent in the town. There's going to be more cases to follow once we grant so many exceptions from, what is it, five houses, I think? So, I'm, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Now, we hold, we, we hold the neighbors and with the rooster issue and with the covering, people in the neighborhood were comfortable with that?
Well, I, I can.
As a change in terms of the, of approving such a variance?
I'm willing, I'm willing to reconsider if you want to continue this for the next month.
Okay. Is there anything that you need in terms of information from the applicants?
Not really.
Okay. Is there other information that you'll need that we can get?
No, no.
Okay.
I believe at this point, the, the public hearing has been closed.
Yes.
So I don't believe it can be continued to the next meeting. You can certainly wait to vote at the next meeting. The board has 62 days to make a determination after the close of the public hearing.
Yeah, I would move that we, we.
Vote at the next meeting?
Continue the voting for the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. We'll wait until next month.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay. All right. That's it. We now move to the new public hearing, Hoteling, 2302Z7 Beckin, 7 Beckin Road. Good, good evening, sir. You are Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Good to have you. You're requesting two setback variances. The first under Section 10815-5 Volt Regulation to the Greenbelt District, asking to change the minimum side yard setback from 25 feet to six feet for an existing addition to the block garage and two steel storage containers, and change minimum side setbacks from 25 to, to two feet for an existing lean-to carport at the licensed scrapyard. The second variance is under Section 10825-4 Scrapyard Standards to change the scrapyard setback from 50 feet to two feet around the entire perimeter of the scrapyard as shown on a sketch which you have submitted. The ZBO Board has also requested the Hyde Park CAC to review the application for any impact on the stream running through the property or any possible impact on the requested variances. Mr. Cummings, would you review the application and discuss?
Excuse me, you need to open the public hearing, please.
Oh, didn't we do that? I thought we did. We need to open the public hearing. I would move that we open the public hearing?
Second.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now it is official. Having said that, Mr. Cummings, do you, would you review the application and discuss, you know, any, any additional information you have in terms of why we should grant these two variances?
I don't have any additional information. The survey was done recently, but I don't have a printout of it. But it was pretty much just to update the swimming pool that was on the opposite side of the residence. Basically, that was it.
Okay.
That was the only real change, and to locate all the buildings, which I had located myself, but now the surveyor relocated them on the survey map.
Is there a change in the location next to the lot?
Not that, not that I know of. I mean, I did it very accurately, and I assume the surveyor did it very accurately, so they should match.
So you feel the, the current application stands in terms of the drawings, et cetera?
Yes, yes.
Okay. For, a site visit was made to the property on June 24th, and discussion of that site visit, we'd like to discuss that. Mr. Perkins? Mr. Perkins, Mr. Bowen, and myself attended that.
Mr. Hoteling hosted us for quite a trip around the property, and we looked at everything that was there, and there's, there's a lot going on. The issue that we came down to was exactly what you have here, the area variances. Mr. Hoteling suggested that you had mentioned that a lot re, revision might be the, the real best solution for him, in the sense that it would leave all, all the properties that he already owns in, I don't know, saleable condition or without any encumbrances.
Uh huh.
And, so we thought that maybe you could explore that for him and let us know if that is an alternative.
I've had discussions with him about that. He's willing to move the line if, you know, to, to the satisfaction of the board. He does want to make it known that if he moves it too much, as, as far as what the zoning, to make it comply 100%, it would damage the lot that he's moving into because there's a residence on it and a driveway that would have to shift and move. So he is willing to move it to a certain degree, but he would like to, to not have to move it the full amount because that would make the other lot much less desirable and make it difficult for him and costly to.
That would make a much smaller variance.
That would what?
That would make the variance much smaller.
Right. It would reduce the variance amount, but to not go the full amount to, to eliminate the variance because that would damage the property. And it would provide no real use to the junkyard, to the salvage yard, because already that's the back of the building, and there's a, a berm and a, a drainage ditch there that, that prevents any other further, you know, development or anything. And then there's vegetation there already established that sort of camouflages it, and as time goes on, that vegetation will increase as well. So the, and because his property is right next door, it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't buy, it's kind of moot to, to move it too much.
Well, moving that would have a significant impact on the, on the consideration for the variance, because that, that building next to the lot really is, if we look at both variances that you're requesting, are impacted by the location of that building.
Well, yes, the, the original building was already there.
Right, understand.
Yeah, so it was already that close to the property line, and he owns the property next door, and, you know, so it doesn't really impact him. If he were to sell the property, the buyer would already know that the, the building is existing there.
Well, as you know, the variance goes with the property, so.
Right.
That variance would remain.
Right.
And so what, that's a dilemma, a consideration I think we have. What I'd ask is, if you go back to him and see what you can come up with in terms of a property line, if that's a, if that's an alternative, because I think it's significant.
Does the board have anything that they would like to see? I mean, the original setback is 25, but then because it's a junkyard, that increases to 50.
Mm-hmm.
If he were to go to, say, 10 or 15, would that be acceptable?
I'd say, take your best shot. I'm not going to tell you what it.
I mean, that, that seems a little more reasonable because that would include the ditch and the berm. And it's, it's a yard that's not going to be used for anything anyway. It's just the back of a building. So, you know, I'm thinking if we went 10 or 15 feet, that would encompass the, the ditch and the berm and still allow the other driveway to exist where it is without having to.
Understand.
To modify the driveway.
Well, you can always give him a, a right of way on the driveway to.
I'm thinking it's some kind of a compromise between, you know, the full, the, the full variance.
Something between 50 and what it is.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, that's why we're asking you to go take a look at it and come back with your, your best shot at it. And the other is, we'd ask you to consider the containers and the lean-to. Those probably need to be moved somewhere other than where they are.
The, the containers he needs, because the, the work that's done in the garage is, the stuff that is used for that is stored in the containers. The lean-to, he could cut back several feet.
But the containers are easily moved, and if you're going, if you're just accessing those for what work you do in the garage.
In the bed and, like, winter weather and rainy weather, it makes it difficult if it's remote, because then he has to carry things in the, in the open weather.
Well, if it's, if it's carrying it 12 feet versus 20 feet, I don't think it's a big deal.
No, no. That, that's a small deal, but.
Yeah.
The container was, already is flush with the front of the garage, so now it would, if we moved it away from the property line, it would then project out in front of the garage on the inside of the property.
Take a look and see where you think the containers could be located. I think that would be important.
All right.
Okay. So, well, with, with those caveats, then, we'd like you to, to do some of that, and we hope the CAC will come back. We did look at the drainage that he is doing for the creek that's run through there. It's now half under a large, what do I want to say?
Drain pipe.
Big drain pipe? Okay, big drain pipe. Is there plans for that to, to be completed?
Yes, he, he wants to complete that.
And do you have a timeframe on that?
I would say by the end of the year.
Okay.
And I had a question, too. He, he mentioned that the DEC had approved it. Do you have that approval to?
I, I do not. That was done prior to my coming on board.
We certainly need a copy of that. We, we would need a copy of that.
Okay. Yeah, you bring a copy of that, that would be good. Okay. Based on that discussion and the fact we still have not received the CAC, I would move that this public hearing be continued.
Public comment?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. Is there public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Please.
Sir, if you could just come up to the microphone?
Yeah. Just take the, there's a hand mic there, sir.
Whatever. Right there. Okay, my name is Dale Blue. I am the owner of the woodlot to the west of the, of the junkyard.
So you're across, are you across Becker Road?
No, I'm on the same side.
Other side, okay, I'm sorry, you're on.
Yeah, so my address is 20 Duchess Hill, and then I own the woodlot that also abuts, abuts the junkyard.
You abut their west side of their property?
That is correct.
I understand now, okay.
So, yeah, I had a discussion with Al about this, because it wasn't exactly clear in the letter that I received. So, I underst, I have, I walked back to take a look, you know, I live there. I walk through the woods sometimes. So, so I'm vaguely aware of what's going on. I did go back and take a look. I was able to see the pool, most of the big housing. I don't, I don't, I did not want to venture back to the garage and the containers. So, if there's one on the map, I'd love to see those. So, our discussion was very cordial. I mean, he was, you know, he's been a good, I've been there for 20 years, he's been a good neighbor. So, bottom line is, I do not object to variances for the existing buildings.
Mm-hmm.
I am, however, concerned of the 50-foot being brought back to two feet. Now.
Brought back to two?
To two, within two feet of my property.
Okay.
That's, if I were to market that property, which I have no, no, no plan to do so, it's landlocked, but that would be what I consider a detriment to the value of the property. So, he, Al and the gentleman here did make the, the good point that, that Al has built a berm. And so, the stone wall, the stone wall on my, is the division. He's built a berm.
Is there a stone, is there a stone wall on your side?
Yeah, it divides the property.
Right, and then you, woods beyond that?
Yeah.
On your property, okay.
Yeah. And so, he's built a berm on his side of the stone wall, and that's good, because that, that effectively says he's not coming closer than that.
Right.
There was some confusion about what setbacks are. So, according to this letter, for a scrapyard or junkyard, it's 50 feet.
Correct.
If there, if, for other uses, is it 20 feet? I don't know.
It's less, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe 20 feet, maybe in the neighborhood of 20.
Okay. So, I think, in talking to him, our general consensus, and I don't like to put words in anybody's mouth, I will put words in my own mouth, that we thought 20 feet would be reasonable, but two feet would be of a concern to me.
Okay. Let me ask you another thing. If, it sounds like, and from my brief site visit there, on your side of the property, there really is probably 50 feet between any business that he has, that Al has, and your property. I mean, I think it's.
No, that's not true.
No, not true.
Okay, any business or anything he owns?
Any structures.
Any structure.
No, he's with, the, the pool and poolhouse are much closer than that. And as you point out, I haven't, okay, I didn't go walk through the property. I know he has a garage back there that is closer than, than 20 feet. And, in listening to the hearing here, it appears that there are two containers there that are closer than 20 feet.
So is the pool within 20 feet of your property? Is that what you're saying?
I haven't gone to measure. It's probably close.
Okay.
It's certainly not 50 feet.
Okay, okay.
So, and he's applying for, all right, what's it say here?
So, what, sir?
You want, you want two feet to an existing carport? Okay, great. Six feet for an existing addition to a block garage? Yeah, I don't, if you have a, I did look online to hope to see the sketches that you referenced, I didn't see them.
Yeah.
I don't know if you put those up or not.
I have a, I have a map of the property here. I don't know if you have that, Mr. Cummings? And show this gentleman, I'm sorry, your name again?
My name is Dale Blue.
Mr. Blue.
Yep, B-L-U-E. This would be great. See what, what it's trying to tell me.
I'm looking at, at, at a map here, and if I understand what you're saying is, your property on this, yeah.
Your, your property is here, and his buildings, where, where the two feet and everything is, is right here.
The pool.
And your property, the pool is not shown, but the pool is, is somewhere in here.
What's back here?
Nothing. This is just empty places where he might park a car or something. These are spaces where he could potentially.
Did you walk the property?
I'm sorry?
Did you walk the property?
It was raining, and we did not.
We didn't walk on your side, sir.
So I'd like to know what is in the, of Al's, it would be the northwest corner.
Ah, okay.
The pool is here.
Well, this is a plan, right? So.
The pool, the pool is.
But it's going to be removed.
Okay, there's a glass out, there's, where's the, where's the glass, where's the glass shed?
This is Beck Road.
Yep. Okay, so I own this back here.
Right.
So I'm mis, am I misreading?
This is your woods.
So, he does, okay, this has proposed 20-feet buffer on the map?
No.
On mine?
This, this is what, he, he was saying two feet all the way around.
No, okay, so.
But you, you said 20, so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go, I, I want at least 20.
20 would be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, give me 20 feet on mine, no, with no, with no. So, give me 20 feet on mine, no, with no, with no.
Cars parked.
No existing anything. If he's got an existing, if he has anything existing, declare it now. Otherwise, it's not in this variance.
Okay, yeah, I don't know.
So, to be neighborly, yeah, I'm with 20 feet. I, the lot is a wood lot, but I'm defending, defending my, my, my monetary interest at this point.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying. I, in, in this ma-, I can't, this is, it's.
Yeah, this is too small for us.
Too small for that, but in that, if I'm looking at this correctly, the, and I think it's the same one you have.
Yeah.
His property in this is on the top of the page, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's north?
That is.
Yeah, no, north, north is to the right.
North is on the right.
North is to the right on the paper.
Okay, so that would be east, or west then?
Yeah.
He's on the west.
The west of Al's, yes.
Alright, I don't see this distance from where the potential cars are parked on your side to the property line. I don't know what that, Mr. Cummings, do you know what that space is?
That is about 30 feet, 20 to 30 feet because the scale of the map is one inch equals 20 feet and that's certainly more than an inch, so that has to be somewhere around 25 feet. I would say the, the nearest parking space is 25 feet from the property line.
From Mr. Blue's property.
Correct.
And that's the existing approved site plan.
I'm sorry?
That's the existing approved site plan.
This one?
Yes.
This is the existing approved site plan.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
And Mr. Hoteling will also be in front of the planning board for these changes.
Right.
Okay.
So, Mr. Blue, if, if we're correct.
He doesn't have anything within 25 of you now.
Then there's no problem as long as you don't go down to two feet.
Okay, okay.
And even then, you know, listen, he's been a good neighbor.
I know, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And we appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, okay.
This was helpful, thank you.
It was very helpful.
Okay, very good.
But our, our concern is always gonna be that whatever we do stays with the property forever.
I do understand that because I've gotten a variance here before.
Oh, you were here before?
It's been many years.
Good, okay. Mr. Blue, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
For your comment, appreciate it. Board members, any other comments or questions? Okay, that was helpful. So, based on that and, and you're, Mr. Cummings, you're gonna go back to, to Al and ask him about what kind of variance he could have, particularly on the north side.
Correct.
And come back to us, that, then I would, I would entertain a, a motion to continue this hearing to July 26th with those caveats. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Both first and second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good. This was helpful?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Thanks again, Mr. Cummings. Alright, CIA 2306Z, the campus, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion?
Is there a second? Come on, guys.
Second?
Second.
Good, Paul, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome, welcome, sir.
Hello.
How are you, sir? Your name again?
I'm Michael Sloan, I'm the architect.
Okay, oh, Mr. Sloan, okay, welcome. At the last hearing, you, CIA has requested two variances. First, under section 108, 4, 4A, to allow wall height as shown on the submitted plan of up to 24 feet, whereas six feet is a maximum for both parcels. The second, in the St. Andrews district, to allow six signs where two are permitted and to allow the permitted 30 square feet of one sign face to be divided among three signs per entrance. And I think, first of all, welcome and we would pleased, we would be pleased for you to sort of refresh us in terms of what you're doing. We do have the drawings and we've looked at those and we have some further questions, but let me open it up to you, sir.
Sure, so, the, the drawings that we provided you, I don't know if you want me to put them up on the screen or not?
I think we, I think we have the pictures here, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, the culinary, I'd like to enhance the entrances for the north and south for the campus.
Right.
Currently, they're just, there is some, some stone, blue stone walls there with their signage on it. But we wanna upgrade these entrances to be more in keeping, as I said in the application, to be more in keeping of the other institutions along Route 9 from Marist to Vanderbilt Mansion. The, the whole intent of these, the design is to make it more welcoming and also be like foreshadowing of the architecture that's within the campus, so it gives a, a sense of where a person is entering into. The, the design is to be of welcoming, as opposed to enhance not just culinary, but also Route 9, people driving up and down. It's, is designed, as you can see in the drawing, to be a significant architectural statement. The, the height which we, you requested last time of, you know, comparing it to Marist College and Vanderbilt is in keeping with their dimensions. They were both very helpful in providing drawings and dimensions of their entrances, which we submitted. And we're within, I think inches actually of what they have. I think Marist actually has a gatehouse that's bigger, but we're not proposing a gatehouse.
We won't talk about that.
But, and we're also making other enhancements in terms of moving the gate, existing guardhouse back from Route 9 so it allows for more, you know, a few more cars to stack up so they're not on Route 9.
That's on the south entrance?
That's at the north entrance, with the main, going in, the main entrance going into the campus.
Okay, there is, there is also a gatehouse on the south entrance too, that's setback.
The little one's gone.
What, it's gone?
It's been removed.
Tells you what I see, okay.
So, we cleaned that up too, but that's already done. There is a little chapel there that was on the.
Maybe that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's a, that's a chapel that's just, that historic, beautiful little building. That's not being touched at all.
Okay.
So, the, the other thing about the design, about the number of signage too, is right now we'd like to have a restaurant sign that, that actually is motorized so that when the restaurants are open, it folds out so you, people can see it, that the restaurants are open. When the restaurants are closed, the sign will fold back against the back wall of the, of the piers so that you would not see it. The south entrance, also we are introducing at the south entrance a turnaround so that if a car does pull in, it can now, right now what happens is a car has to kind of back out into Route 9 and then move onward when the, that gate, when that entrance is closed. So, we're now providing the ability for a car to make that three-point turn at that entrance.
Okay.
And just to clarify, there will be two restaurant signs, one for the north entrance, one for the south entrance?
Correct. Yes, and it'd be the same design.
Okay, is there any, just my own curiosity in terms of signage? I've gone in and got lost coming in on the north entrance to where the restaurant was and ended up walking across the campus. Now, that may be my visual issue.
So, they will, so at, at, at the, hopefully there'll be a security person there to give you directions when you come in. But at the, our proposed design, there will not be directional signage.
Okay, okay.
That's really the intent of the.
Is there plan, some, I think there was some plans on the south entrance or further to change some of the road structure back in there for parking, et cetera?
At the south entrance, no, the only change at the south entrance is to clean up the DOT curbing and the turnaround. There is no circulation change, no widening or anything. It's literally, right now there's no curb, so we're putting in a DOT 28-foot radius curb and nothing exciting, but.
And that's, that's inside of the, of the entrance you're proposing, is that correct? The turnaround.
The turnaround is actually between Route, Route 9 and the, you know, the gate. Because obviously what happens if the gate is closed, they gotta be able to get back out.
So, you've set the gate back further?
The gate is set back.
Will be set back, okay, okay, alright, that, that's what that is, that shows more, okay. Now, Mr. Perkins, you had some?
Yeah, I, I have some concerns about the size. I understand that Marist has something, but they're the town of Poughkeepsie. Vanderbilt's has something, but that's historic. We're obligated to do the minimum variance that the ZBA deems necessary and adequate to preserve and protect and character the neighborhood, blah, 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 alright? Seems like this is, this is really more than we need. I do like the fact that, that south is pushed back a little bit off the road. It does not look like the north one is pushed back at all.
They're actually the same curb and same pushback, the same distance.
Just 'cause it's so big, wide, it doesn't appear that way.
Well, let me ask you that.
Do we still have 100-foot setback on Route 9 for buildings and structures and? It seems to me that we, we allowed a small variance for the culinary to put up a building that they had because they penetrated into that space.
Fences can be within the setback, fences and walls can be up to the property line to six feet tall.
Up to six feet, okay.
That's what the variance is for, they wanna go higher than that. But yes, they can put a fence or a wall right on the property.
So, personally, would I, I'd like to see it smaller, back further.
This is on the north entrance?
On the north entrance particularly, yes.
Have you had consideration there that, because that setback is different from the south entrance?
No, he said it is not.
It is not.
Is the, the actual gate on the setback the same?
The distance here is so large that it's not obvious.
Yeah, in terms of dimensions, it's the same curve and radius and the same piers. The.
Alright, so, let me, let me simplify my own mind. The distance from 9 to where you enter is the same either the north or the south?
Within inches, I mean, it might not mathematically exactly, but within inches.
Okay, so is it just that we're, I mean, the gate on the north is clearly different, it's larger.
It, I mean, there was a, there was a sense that, you know, this, this was all vacant land at one point, right? Not that long ago, maybe.
Hundred years ago.
No, a little bit less. And the 100-foot was to protect that view, right? So, when you came down Teller Hill, it was a beautiful view of, well, now it's a berm and, and foliage. But the other side at one point was, was mowed and they used it for a field and stuff. So, there was a 100-foot that was supposed to be there and that, and I just feel like this is an encroachment on that.
Any thoughts on that?
And I guess at six feet, it wouldn't be that much of an encroachment. At 24, it is.
So, I mean, the, the thoughts on that is when, when you have a, you can, that's what I was trying to say in terms of Marist and Vanderbilt. When you have, it's not so much trying to match them, it's when you have a property of that significance and, and world renown, you know, the entrance gotta be proportional to the campus that they're, you're going into. I mean, if you have.
I can understand the desire to do that, but, but I'm saying that maybe it could be moved back a little and it would not be in your face as much when you're on Route 9. And it would still be very visible and very beautiful and still, still, would still do what you're trying to have it do.
Well, keep in mind, because this is something I've seen many times over, is when you have a, you say a bigger opening like the north entrance and when you built these structures, you think 20 feet, that's pretty tall, or 24 feet because the little pinnacles atop, the actual structure is probably closer to 21 feet or so, there's a little lightning thing on top. But the, it's not gonna feel that big because of the scale, outdoor scale to it.
To you, it may not. It already does to me.
Right, but I'm saying when you're there on site and present and, and you see how tall, you know, like, it, it doesn't, it's not that imposing, actually.
Let's, let's do it this way. If this is, if this is Route 9 and this is standing here and you're driving by, the angle is here. If it's here, it's a different angle. It won't appear as tall. Correct?
Right.
Alright.
And that's why we're, and that's why we did appreciate it back. I mean, that's why there's curved walls that remove it further back from Route 9. It's not up against Route 9.
So, this entrance is the same distance from 9 as the, as the south entrance?
Yes, that's on the hill covered, I mean, that's, that's got a building right next to it. There, there's a lot of differences. This is a big open space, pretty much.
Yeah.
It's the opinion that I think that it does change the character of what it is there. I mean, I also remember that there was quite a bit of work going through that first sign that you have there now and the height of the wall and, so, I mean, this is a large step. And personally, I'm not ready to do that. I think that it, there are alternatives. You can make it a little smaller, put it back a little bit. The, is it substantial? It is very substantial. Is it as self-created? Yes, it's because it's a desire, something that you want. So, right of way, three out of the five things that we have to look at are yeses instead of nos. And it's, I couldn't, I can't vote for it the way it is.
Is there any consideration of, of looking at that north entrance in some different fashion?
So, I'm actually with the CIA.
John, you can come on up.
Can I speak as well?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm the senior director of facilities for the culinary in Submarita.
Your, sir, your name?
John McEnroe.
Mr. McEnroe.
Some of you may remember the tennis star John McEnroe. I'm not him. I don't have his personality. Almost the same spelling where he has the letter O, I have the letter U. So, I will attempt to enhance Michael's statement relative to the size of the walls themselves. We actually had considered larger, more dramatic. We had, we looked at several architects before we brought Michael onboard and some of them wanted much more substantial in size. Based on, as Michael says, the campus itself. When you look at the campus, the size of the buildings, the size of Roth, it's a massive structure. We wanted to give the image of two visitors of what they would be coming to. And so, anything that was tiny, small, we didn't think would do it, for one. And two, we certainly didn't want something extravagant or large which would quite frankly scare people off. I worked at Vassar for 11 years and that entry gate works for Vassar, but it's imposing. So, we actually brought Michael onboard because what he actually presented was something very similar to what we have now. We thought it was welcoming and inviting. We thought it was a reflection of what was to come once you came on campus and that's why architecturally, he chose what he did in terms of the actual physical elements, in terms of the, the pediments, the copper pediments, the styling, the light fixtures, the actual brick material. And so, that's a long way of answering. We hadn't considered reducing it in size because in our minds, compared to the other architects we used, which incidentally was the architect that Marist used, Robert Stern, for their entrances and two others, and we just decided that they were too grand and too elaborate. So, the idea of reducing in size even further from what we feel we already did has not been considered.
Just, I appreciate that, Mr. McEnroe. A question, because I know a year ago, what was it, a year, year and a half ago, we, we gave a variance for the signage that you had, that you currently have. And so, this was, this was a significant change in terms of what happened between then and now.
So, it actually depends on the college's direction. When we, what we did was hiring a branding firm to improve our branding, to change our branding. The signs that are there now reflect that. And we would not be moving forward with the gates. That was, would have been done no matter the situation because we changed the branding to that one symbol that we have now. symbol that we have now, and that signage there reflects that. The idea of doing the gates now is really an enhancement based on what we see with Marist, and based on what we see with Vanderbilt, and based on actually getting gifts, the college is not paying for this directly, we're actually getting gifts from donors for these things. So, we are perfectly content with what's there now, we installed them last year to make sure it was in line with our branding, but now that the idea of these gates came along, we love the idea and recognize that these will enhance the campus far more than the signing, the sign did. If you look at the signs alone that we installed last year, that's actually one small element to the branding change we made, go into our bookstore, look at, you know, our website, look at the sweatshirts, look at the dishes, look at the glasses, look at my logo, look at my business card, everything changed, and that, those two signs were just one aspect of it.
Okay, okay, so, it's not really, these, these gates are not branding, these are really more in, in, following really the architectural tone of the campus.
Yep, so, I'll agree, I think that they are attractive, but I think they're too big for where they are, if they're closer to the buildings, it'd be fine, but they're too close to Route 9.
Okay, so, basically, in the, in the, in the pictures you, in the renderings you've given, I'm sorry, it appears that Vanderbilt and Marist are roughly the same as what you're requesting, in the 20, right around 20 feet, about the same, so, not a difference in terms of that. Okay, let me stop. Other board member, Paul?
I have a question, right now, I'm thinking of the south entrance, there's nice landscaping and some trees, what's gonna happen with that?
We don't change the immediate landscape outside where the gates are going to be installed, that all stays.
So, it'll, all those trees won't be cut down for, to make room for the, okay, that's my concern.
Are we cutting any trees down?
There's, there's one older, there's one old pine tree by the light post, by the light, utility post, that's gonna be cut down. That's just an older pine tree that's actually right next to the gas, no, the, what do you call it, the water?
Utility feed?
Yeah, it's the main one, it's turned off.
Okay.
Disconnected to the campus.
Okay, Paul, any other thoughts?
Uh, definitely, concern. Can I make, make one other comment? I mean, when you said, one of the comments was about, you know, Vanderbilt is an historic structure, I mean, the culinary's, you know, the intent here is, these structures will be another imagery that you will probably see in the Hyde Park posters, with all the different wonderful structures that you see in Hyde Park, it is supposed to be a future historic monument.
Certainly, you have a historic structure within the campus.
That's exactly right, Roth Hall.
Roth Hall was built in 1907, completed, which was shortly after Vanderbilt, which was...
Correct, and that's the intent here, is, we're not trying to overdramatize, we're trying to be appropriate to what the campus is.
Right.
But, again, that's an opinion, right, and as far as I can see, that being back 10 feet, or being two feet shorter, none of that would be a problem, and again, it is our responsibility to do the minimum variance possible, and we're going from 6 to 24?
20.
Yeah.
24.
20.
20.
It's 24, including the copula at the top.
So, that's my job, yours is to make money for culinary.
Is 20, so, 24 for that little spiral, can you take that spiral up?
No, you wouldn't want to do that. You could reduce it, though, I'm, I'm just saying, it could be...
I mean, I'll, does the, I have to look at the Hyde Park zoning law, is the lightning protection counted in the building height?
No.
No, and these aren't, these aren't buildings, or are you talking about the...
These aren't buildings, though.
No.
I mean, these are lightning protections on both tops.
And, under the district standards, just for the board's consideration, in this district, the primary means of access are the corridors established by streets, direct access from Route 9 shall be kept at a minimum, and entrances from Route 9 that are permitted shall be characteristic of an estate entrance, and the other estate that we have in Hyde Park would be Norrie Mills, and they also have walls and columns. I don't know what the heights of those are.
Okay, okay, Mr. Agarwal?
I personally like it.
Thank you.
I think it's very attractive.
Okay, other, Jim, okay, counsel, anything?
Hi, nothing.
Any other, we have no other public, have we received any public comments?
We have not.
Therefore, I would move that we close this public hearing, is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Repose to closing the public hearing?
Yeah, I think we could let go another month, have people look at some things, I don't know.
Okay, so, for...
Doesn't matter.
So, we have a majority to close, close the public hearing, we have a resolution. Okay, before you, it's Resolution 2301Z, to grant area variance to the Culinary Institute of America, the 1946 Campus Drive, dated June 28th, 2023, Resolution 2306Z. Whereas the applicant, Michael Sloan, AI, on behalf of the Culinary Institute, has submitted an application for area variance to allow the construction of new entry gates consisting of walls, masonry piers with copulas, and six signs, then, then allowed, at 1946 Campus Drive, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel numbers 606-3-02-940557 and 606-3-02-906630 in the St. Andrews Historic District, and whereas the project is depicted in plans prepared by Michael Sloan, dated April 25th, 2023, whereas the applicant seeks the first variance from zoning law section 108-4 dot 4A2 to allow wall heights as depicted on the submitted plans of 24 feet, whereas a height of six feet is allowed, and whereas the applicant seeks a second area variance from zoning law section 108-242C-3A to allow six signs, where two signs are permitted, and to allow the permitted 30 square feet of one sign to face, sign face to be divided among three signs per entrance, and whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the Town Law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33 dot 6B2 regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, the applicant, the bent number, one, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than these area variances. Zoning Board of Appeals is required to grant the minimum variance necessary, requested variances are numerically substantial. Requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district, the difficulties are self-created. We had further resolve that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants... I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you're reading from...
Am I reading?
An older version?
I'm reading from an older version.
If you'd like to...
Okay. Do we have to start again? I, I apologize.
I think you can just start reading from the...
Now, therefore, resolve. Now, I beg, I apologize, now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the Town Law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-336 regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, the applicant applied to construct new entry gates which are comparable to existing entry gates of nearby educational and recreational sites such as Marist College and the Vanderbilt Mansion Historic Site. The applicant has submitted a visual analysis dated June 12th, 2023, which compares the proposed project to those existing gates, and the board finds that the proposed entry gates are of a similar size and character. The benefits, number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some fee, method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than those area variances. The applicant seeks to create entry gate structures comparable to similar institutions in the surrounding area, and clearly mark the entries to the campus for visitors and the traveling public coming from both north and south on New York State Route 9. The applicant also seeks to add signage to communicate when the campus restaurants are open for patronage, these benefits can only be achieved through the grant of the requested variance. Number three, the zoning board of appeals is required to grant the minimum variance necessary, requested variances are numerically substantial, allowing a 24-foot wall heights for the proposed masonry, masonry piers where a six-foot height is permitted, and allowed a total of six signs where two signs are permitted, however, when considered with the nature of the property and the, and use thereon, and the utility of the entryways, and the applicable signage, the requested variances are appropriate. Number four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the general neighborhood or district. The proposed signage and entry gate structures will serve to direct visitors to the restaurants on campus, and will further serve to control traffic flow to and from the campus. The difficulties, number five, are self-created. We had further resolve that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions, pursuant to section 108-335F1, the authorized activity must commence, commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise, it will be revoked, and two payments of all fees are, are, and escrow. It has been moved, is there a second? Second. Madam Secretary, would you pull, pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
No.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
And Chair McNary?
Yes. This, this resolution passes, good luck on, on those.
Sure, it'll look nice.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Could be better.
Much appreciated.
I, I hope sometime they have internal, internals, I got lost coming in on the north entrance, in terms of where the restaurants...
I haven't been...
You know, it's, I've been there for two years, and just because I know where to go, but, you're not the first person to say that.
All right, well, that makes me feel better. In terms of the construction, what's the proposal in terms of start date and completion? Any idea about that?
Ideally, as soon as we get planning board approval.
How long will it take, though, once you get approved?
Six months.
Um...
They can knock that out in three months, can't you?
You could, but I wouldn't want them to.
Six, six months.
We want to do a quality job.
You think before winter, full winter?
Ideally, I mean, you know, sometimes, because we're matching bricks to Roth Hall...
Yeah.
It's not like you can go to the...
Home Depot?
Home Depot and grab the bricks, I mean, these bricks might have to be, I mean, I have bricks that will match, but you have to wait till the brick plant runs the bricks, so, that's a huge time variable there.
There's also the other element of completing the fundraising aspect.
Details, details.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there still an eating space in one of the kitchens downstairs? Because when I first went there, years ago, we walked down into the bowels, and there was a, inside of the, a kitchen area is where they fed us, it was very nice.
It's actually, you're either referring to K1 or K15, and it's on the southwest corner, closest to Calavita.
Do they still use that, or...
They use, the students do.
Oh, okay.
So, there are a number of kitchens that, for lunch and for dinner, not early, I'm not there early enough for breakfast, so I don't know, they eat.
There was, there was a lot of kitchen noise, it was very nice, and, and they did excellent work, I mean, they displayed their, their talents to us, and...
You know, it's interesting, because I've worked at Vassar College for 11 years, and then I worked at SUNY New Ultras for 12, and now I'm here, and the students and the atmosphere are just so incredibly professional and pleasant.
Yeah.
You know, it's, working for liberal arts colleges, institutions, are far more opinionated, which is, of course, welcomed, but, particularly for those institutions, but at the CIA, it's just a much more...
Well, it's a more focused...
Yeah, and I'd say, I, I enjoy the, the pie and the soup programs on the weekend. Oh, yeah. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. There being no other business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion. Second.
Third.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. This meeting...
It's just that I'm here, about to fix the...